I am the Chief Executive Officer of the Nassau County Industrial Development Agency, and I have been authorized to hold a public hearing. Today is March sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one, and the time is now three P M. Given the ongoing COVID nineteen public health crisis and related executive orders issued by Governor Andrew Cuomo, this public hearing is being conducted using telephone conference and video conference. Participants have accessed this public hearing through a Zoom registration or by watching the live stream on our YouTube channel, which can be found at Nassau IDA Live dot org. If you are participating via Zoom, the agency encourages all interested parties to participate, and as such, has reserved certain points in today's meeting for public comment. If you do choose to make a comment, you will do so by selecting the raise hand icon on your device. Once you select the icon, you will have the opportunity to speak when your name is announced. Please note that this is a moderated hearing, and at times you may hear me speaking directly to our moderator, Catherine Fee, Chief Marketing Officer and Director of Business Development for the agency. Also note that this hearing is being both livestreamed and recorded. In addition, we have a stenographer present who will be transcribing this hearing so he can add the transcript of this hearing to the public record. Interested parties may also submit written comments, which will be included within the public hearing records. Written comments may be sent to my attention, Harry Coghlan, Chief Executive Officer at One West Street, Fourth Floor, New York, Minneola, New York, one one five zero one, or via email to info@NassauIDA.org. All written comments will need to be submitted to the agency by noon Thursday, March eighteenth, in order to be incorporated into the public comment file in time for that evening's meeting of the agency's board. Public comments will be shared with the agency board at its meeting on March eighteenth, starting at approximately six forty-five P M., when the project may be considered. This is a public hearing pursuant to Section eight fifty-nine dash A of the New York General Municipal Law, as amended with respect to a project of the agency for Amazon dot com Services LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the state of Delaware and authorized to conduct business in the state of New York as a foreign limited liability company, and Syosset Park Development LLC, a limited liability company organized and existing under the laws of the state of Delaware and authorized to conduct business in the state of New York as a foreign limited liability company, which have presented an application for financial assistance to the agency, which application requests that the agency consider undertaking a project consisting of the following: A, one, the acquisition of an interest in an approximately thirty-nine acre parcel of land located at the northeast corner of Robbins Lane and Miller Place, Syosset, Town of Oyster Bay, Nassau County, New York, Section fifteen, Block H, lots two five one and two five two; two, the construction of a one-story, two-hundred-and-four-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-foot building on the land, together with related improvements to the land, including surface parking spaces; three, the acquisition of certain furniture, fixtures, machinery, and equipment necessary for the completion thereof, all of the foregoing for use by the applicant as a warehouse distribution center facility; B, the granting of certain financial assistance within the meaning of Section eight fifty-four fourteen of the General Municipal Law with respect to the foregoing in the form of potential exemptions or partial exemptions from real property taxes, mortgage recording taxes, and sales and use taxes; and C, the lease, license, or sale of the project facility to the applicant or such other entity as may be designated by the applicant and agreed upon by the agency. The project facility would be initially owned, operated, and/or managed by the applicant or such other entity as may be designated by the applicant and agreed upon by the agency. The company would receive financial assistance from the agency in the form of potential exemptions or partial exemptions from real property taxes, sales and use taxes, and mortgage recording taxes. Notice of this public hearing was published in Newsday, the Nassau Edition, on March fourth, two thousand twenty-one, and provided to the Chief Executive Officer of each county, city, town, village, school district, and other affected tax jurisdiction within which the project facility is located by letter dated March fourth, two thousand twenty-one. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for all interested parties to present their views orally or in writing with respect to the project and/or the granting of the financial assistance. Please note that this is solely a hearing for the agency to receive comments from the public. It is not an opportunity for questions and answers nor a dialogue. Neither the agency nor the applicant are required to respond to questions at this hearing. Remarks are limited to three minutes per speaker, and each attendee has one opportunity to speak. Please start your comment by stating your full name with spelling and address for the record. Before we move to public comment, we will first turn to Mr. Dan Deegan with the firm of Fortelli Deegan Toronto L L P., who is counsel to the applicant and will make a brief presentation on behalf of the applicant. Mr. Deegan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Coghlan. Good afternoon. You can hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. Always good to confirm. Yeah, as you said, my name is Dan Deegan. I'm with the law firm Fortelli Deegan Toronto, the attorney for the applicant. I also have with me on this call from the applicant, Mr. Brad Griggs, who's the Senior Manager for Economic Development for Amazon. Say hi to Brad then. So I'm also going to tell you what to change the pages on the slide as I go through. So you can change it right now to the next page, Catherine. And then change again. Okay, so as we just heard, and I think we all know, the project before this I D A board is the construction of an approximately two-hundred-thousand-square-foot state-of-the-art distribution facility on Robbins Lane and Syosset. The proposed use is for by Amazon as a last-mile delivery facility. As anyone in Nassau County or Long Island knows, this site has had quite the legacy. It's been, it's a thirty-nine-acre site that's been vacant since the nineteen eighties. It was previously the home of Sera Wire, which was a pretty substantial industrial operation, but it's been vacant since the nineteen eighties. It's left behind a legacy of environmental issues, visual blight, failed development attempts, many of which were controversial in the past. There's been no jobs, no economic activity on this site for decades. There's been very low vacant land taxes being generated, really no economic generation for decades at this point. Change, turn the page, please. You know, Amazon's a well-known technology-driven company that has transformed the way the goods are distributed to end users. It operates a customer fulfillment network that's comprised of multiple distribution facilities across the country. Change the slide, please. With the I D A's assistance, Amazon would enter into a long-term lease of a newly constructed state-of-the-art distribution facility. The applicants, together, would invest over seventy-one million dollars to develop this long-blied site. Next slide, please. I want to turn this over to Brad for just a very brief description of the proposed operation at the site and how it lays out, and then come back to myself.
Thanks, Dan, and thank you to Executive Director Coghlan, Chairman Kessel in the I D A. We appreciate the time here today to consider our project. What we're looking at, as Dan indicated, is a state-of-the-art, last-mile delivery station or distribution center for our products. So this facility would be the last place that an Amazon package would arrive before it hits your business or doorstep. The facility operates in a manner in which these packages are brought via line hauler fifty-three-foot tractor-trailers, eighteen-wheeler trucks to the site. That is the area demarcated in red, predominantly off of the L I E service road into the site where they would be, packages would be unloaded and sorted by Amazon employees. That is the yellow area there to the right of the facility as you're looking at the plan in front of you. The Amazon employees would sort the packages, usually using material handling equipment, conveyance systems to sort them into delivery routes. Beginning at about ten A M., the van delivery drivers would arrive on site, parking in the upper right-hand corner of the facility there in their personal vehicles. The area in blue demarcates where the vans would be stored overnight. We would anticipate the first wave of vans to exit this facility at about ten A M. in the morning. They head out one time and then return in the evening after the rush hour period, about seven, seven-thirty. The first wave of vans would return to the site. Those delivery service vans are third-party independent contractors handling our delivery routes. So in addition to the jobs we're talking about here today directly associated or employed by Amazon, this site would also indirectly lead to employment correlated to this site for several hundred van drivers and management for our delivery service partners that we would anticipate to be small businesses, logistics companies, and entrepreneurs in the Nassau County region. So appreciate the time here to walk those here in the public through our operations. We've already provided much more detailed overview of our operations during the preliminary board meeting. So I'll pass it back over to Dan, and then if there are any questions, happy to answer those.
Thank you, Brad. Could you change the slide? Yes. So this project is fully zoning compliant. In January of this year, the Town of Oyster Bay granted site plan approval and issued negative declaration for secret review purposes. Building permits are currently being processed. As we all know, this property has had a legacy of environmental contamination and issues. It's been designated a brownfield site, which is under the jurisdiction of the New York State D E C. Over the decades, there have been numerous testing samples and efforts at remedial actions. More recently, in connection with this project and after an extensive process, including public hearings and input, the D E C is currently considering a proposed plan to address these issues at the site once and for all as part of the construction of this project. A plan, by the way, that would add significant cost to the redevelopment of the site. That D E C determination is expected shortly, and no construction can start without that approval. Please turn the page. Maybe you already did, okay. You know, in an effort to inform the community of the plans for the site, the applicant and the team, we've reached out and met with County Legislature Drucker. We've met with local civic associations, attended their meetings. We've met with local labor leaders, and we've also met with the school district and their representatives and had constructive dialogues with each one of them. Next page. This project will have a tremendous positive impact, especially in these COVID-challenged times. It will create two-hundred to two-hundred-and-fifty high-paying construction jobs. It will create a minimum of one-hundred-and-fifty full-time employees at the site, including twenty-five management jobs. In addition, as just referenced by Brad, it's going to create hundreds of delivery service providers, many of which will work for newly formed delivery service companies. Next page. However, given the high cost of construction on Long Island and in general, given the high cost of addressing the environmental legacy of this site, also given the historic volatility of real estate taxes in Nassau County, and, very importantly, the need to justify the high costs of this development of this site compared to others in the region internally at the company, the applicant is seeking this I D A's assistance. It should be noted that Amazon currently already services its customers in this area through an existing network of distribution. But this presents an opportunity to attract a new seventy-one-million-dollar capital investment here in this community and the tremendous positive economic activities that go along with these proposed operations. Next page. This request for assistance should not be viewed as a tax break or a tax cut. Rather, the construction of this building creates a new tax base that does not exist today. The request of the applicant is to have a fifteen-year pilot that phases in these new taxes over a period of time in order to make the property, given its high cost, financially attractive and financially feasible. Current taxes on the property are nine-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars a year, and they have historically been at a relatively low level because it's been vacant. The proposed pilot that's being considered, asked to be considered by the I D A, starts at one-point-two-million dollars, an immediate increase even before the commencement of construction, and ultimately over fifteen, that fifteen years works its way up to close to three-million dollars a year by year fifteen. Without this project, that current nine-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand dollars will continue with just normal cost of living increases, and that is a real possibility given the decades that this property has laid fallow. Finally, you know, just to complete the record, we are also requesting a sales tax exemption on the construction materials and a partial mortgage recording tax exemption on the financing in connection with the project. With that being said, Mr. Coghlan, I turn it back over to the public portion of the hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Deegan. Thank you, Mr. Griggs. Before we move to the public comment period, we will hear from Agency Chairman Richard Kessel. However, if you do wish to make comment following Mr. Kessel's remarks, you may start selecting the raise hand icon now, and you will be placed into the queue. Mr. Chairman, please proceed.
Hi, Harry. Thank you, and good afternoon, everyone. I'm Richard Kessel. I'm Chairman of the I D A Board, and first I want to welcome everyone participating in this process. Whether you're for the project, against the project, or want to learn about the project, this is an important part of our democracy to participate and to state our opinions respectfully to each other. I have been contacted by several people over the last week or so, a couple by email, a couple by telephone, and I just want to make a few things clear so people understand what this is and what it isn't. This is a hearing. There is no vote by the I D A Board today at this hearing. And some of the I D A Board members, and I think we have a terrific board, are watching the hearing. Every I D A Board member, and there are seven of us, will receive a transcript of all of your comments, whether they're on the record today or they're submitted by email or in writing. And the I D A Board ultimately will vote on the project following this hearing. A couple of points that were raised by people to me, I just want to explain briefly. Number one, the question is, you know, why didn't we do this at night? And, you know, there are some people who might be working and want to have an opportunity to speak about this project, and I think that's common sense and makes sense. So I want to indicate, and by the way, there are a few people who called me and said that we should have done it earlier in the day. Why, I got, I had someone who asked me, why can't we do it at noon? Everyone has a different opinion, but let me assure you that you will be heard. Obviously, this hearing, you can make comments for or against the project. Furthermore, this is currently on the agenda for our board meeting, which is this Thursday night, starting at six-thirty, although the I D A portion starts closer to seven. And if you don't have the opportunity to speak today, don't want to speak today, or are unavailable today, you will be given the opportunity to speak to the I D A Board on Thursday night. So for those people that are working today but want to comment, again, whatever position you take at night, you will be able to do that on Thursday night. The other, a couple of other points to make. People have raised the issue of the D E C, and I want to just tell you, I actually brought this. I have read all the comments that were submitted to the D E C in their process, and I want to thank Kevin McKenna for sending me those letters and comments. I have distributed them to all of the I D A Board members so that they can read them as well. Obviously, the D E C has not made a decision, and no action will be finalized until we receive a decision from the D E C. And if the I D A Board decides to go forward with the project, the project will not be able to be finalized and closed without a D E C decision. So I want to make sure that people know that we're not environmentalists. We don't make environmental decisions, but respecting some of the concerns raised about the contamination at the property and what the D E C is likely to do while we are continuing the process going forward. In the end, this project cannot be supported by the I D A without a D E C decision that is favorable. That's an important point to make. The other, a couple of points that people have raised, and I think, again, everyone makes a good point. And that is, the I D A is not deciding whether or not this project goes forward. Those decisions have primarily already been made by various entities in the Town of Oyster Bay. And I know that the town itself, Supervisor Saladino, and others in town government have looked at this closely, and obviously, there have been permits and other things that have been allowed and approved by the town. The I D A is limited to the financial assistance that's being requested, and I think that's an important point. Another thing that's been asked, and I think it's a legitimate question, is why are you cutting their taxes? The I D A never, never cuts taxes. I know sometimes you read in the paper headlines that say we're cutting taxes, but we don't. Some I D As do cut taxes. We don't. And in fact, as Dan Deegan pointed out, I've got some of the numbers here. The fact is that the, if we approve the pilot agreement package that's currently been negotiated, the amount of money that the localities will receive is far greater than what they are currently receiving in taxes on vacant land. And I think that's an important point. The other thing I want to indicate is why are we doing it virtually? And I do understand that. I wish we could all be together. I'm certainly not afraid of being together with however many people there are. But unfortunately, we're in a very difficult time right now with COVID. And, you know, I think that to have had an in-person hearing at this point would be dangerous and, you know, could result in the spread of the virus, and something that we don't want to happen. I don't like doing things virtually. Our board has been meeting virtually for almost a year, and all of us, you know, feel bad about that. But this is how we have to conduct business right now. And someone asked the question after that, well, why don't we just put this off for a few months? And the answer is because we need to continue to conduct business. And whether we approve this or not, there are hundreds and hundreds of jobs at stake here, and people need work right now. And so I see, I understand the desire to do this in person, but we are doing projects all the time that are virtual. I am hopeful in the next couple of months that as more people get vaccinated, and I hope everyone that's participating in this will consider getting vaccinated. It's important that we can do these kinds of things in person. But this is not done for any other purpose other than to continue to do business, and I think that's critically important. Finally, I just want to indicate, and I've spoken to a number of people over the last week or two, some who vigorously oppose it, some who vigorously support it, and everyone is entitled to their opinion. And I think the only thing I ask is please be respectful of people who have spoken or do speak going forward. I think that's really important. I wish that, again, we could do this in person, but having said that, please make your comments respectful. I don't think we want to be in a position where we're criticizing people personally. With that, I want to thank everyone for your participation. I can assure you that myself and the entire I D A Board that will be meeting and discussing this will listen to everything you say or write to us. As I said, I've read all of the comments and letters, and we will continue to do that. We want to hear you. Thank you very much, and I'll turn it back to staff, Harry and Catherine, so we can go through the list. And by the way, I just also want to again thank our staff. This is a lot of work that goes into this. We first began negotiating and talking with Amazon months and months ago. This isn't something we're rushing all of a sudden to do. And I want to thank all of our staff, Harry and Danielle and Catherine and our counsel for the great work that they've done. Thank you, and ready to proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ladies and gentlemen, we're now ready to commence the public comment period. Once again, please select the raise hand icon. You will be headed to the queue. Comments are limited to three minutes. For your benefit, you will see a timer on the screen so you can gauge the length of your comments, and please start your comments with your full name and address for the record. Catherine, do we have anyone in the queue for comment?
Yes, sir. Our first speaker is Ralph Catapano. Ralph, can you please state your name again for the record?
Mr. Catapano, you may be muted.
Are you calling Ralph or me?
Mr. Catapano?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now. Please proceed.
I noticed that.
All right. He's saying that he's not Mr. Catapano, even though his name is appearing that way. I do see that legislator, Arnie Drucker, has raised his hand to speak. Legislator, are you with us?
I'm here. You hear me?
We can.
Hi. Good afternoon. Hello, everyone. First of all, I want to thank you, Chairman Kessel, for allowing me this opportunity to address the I D A, and I applaud you, your board, and your staff for your diligent and conscientious efforts and consideration on behalf of all taxpayers in Nassau County. I also want to thank Dan Deegan and the members of the Syosset Park Development and Amazon, who graciously met with me and gave me their time to explain this project from its early stages. I appreciate that. I'd like to offer my thoughts on the application before you by Syosset Park Development and Amazon concerning the property of three oh five Robbins Lane in Syosset. Let me begin by stating that the health and safety of our residents remain my top priority and must remain the top priority of all who possess the authority to render decisions affecting the future of this site. I fully expect that any final plans to develop the site must satisfy the comprehensive environmental analysis that produces an appropriate and acceptable plan for remediating threats to land, water, and air quality as mandated by the D E C, along with the residents of this community. To be clear, nothing would make me happier than to see this problematic, blighted site be developed, which has been the source of such acrimonial conflict for decades. I know I've lived in this community my whole life, so I'm well aware of this conflict. But the development must be the right project, done the right way for the future of our community. While I appreciate many of the efforts made by the developer to prevent and mitigate against any quality of life concerns in terms of noise, pollution, and traffic, and I like the idea of this last-mile destination spot, but I still have concerns that the hundreds of trucks that will be picking up packages every day and then going through residential neighborhoods along Robbins Lane and Birchwood Park, and that can't be. These trucks must enter and exit the same way the trails do throughout the night, which was designed to not disrupt the quality of life of the residential community. I'm also very cognizant of the obligation on the developer to remediate this site in the safe, effective, and lawful manner promulgated by the New York State D E C. This remediation must be done so there is zero disruption of any toxins or contaminants in the soil. And I know that the D E C will be monitoring this project very carefully. But I'm also perplexed by why anyone would think it's necessary or appropriate to give a trillion-dollar corporation pilot tax breaks that would be funded by Nassau taxpayers while we continue to navigate what I praise the final stages of an economic downturn caused by the COVID-nineteen pandemic, and hard-working Nassau County residents and small business owners are still struggling to pay property taxes, sales taxes, and mortgages. In addition, Amazon's labor practices and their outward hostility to organize labor are a glaring red flag to me. News articles recently covering an ongoing unionization vote in Bessemer, Alabama, are replete with accounts of the hardball tactics Amazon has deployed. Do we really want to endorse these type of wage-depressing, union-busting labor practices by rewarding Amazon with the tax dollars of Nassau County residents? I certainly don't. In conclusion, I hope this application, because of the In conclusion, I hope this application, because of the lack of merit on its face and the abject unworthiness of the help of Nassau County taxpayers. Thank you very much for your time.
Arnie, thank you. I just want to commend you for your interest that you've taken in this project. I think people don't realize the efforts that that you make and other legislators make on projects like this. You ask questions, make comments, make good suggestions. And I really appreciate all of your input and your hard work and diligence.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Legislator. Catherine, do we have anyone else in the queue at this time?
Yes, sir. We have Laura Schultz. Laura, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi. Good afternoon to you all. I'm Laura Schultz. I live at 22 Barber Drive, Syosset. I serve as the President of Residents for More Beautiful Syosset. We are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit civic organization in the Syosset area. It is unimaginable and unconscionable that a company that makes billions of dollars a year in profits has presented an application for financial aid to the Nassau County IDA. Syosset taxpayers suffering under the hardships posed by the COVID-19 pandemic and trying to pay their Nassau County property taxes and their Nassau County sales taxes are the ones who need this tax relief at this time. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Thank you for joining us this afternoon. Catherine, is there anyone else in the queue? You are muted, Catherine.
I apologize. Yes, we have Tracy Frankel. Tracy, are you with us?
Ms. Frankel, you may be muted.
Can you hear me?
I can now. You may proceed again.
Wonderful. Thank you for the opportunity to provide comment on the tax.
Tracy?
Ms. Frankel, we lost you again.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we'll let you start over, please.
Okay. Chairman Kessel, thank you. Members of the IDA Board, Chief Executive Gofflin, thank you for the opportunity to provide comment on the tax abatements proposed for the Syosset Park warehouse development at 305 Robbins Lane and the ultimate beneficiary of those abatements, Amazon. I'm Tracy Frankel, President of the Syosset Board of Education. As we wrote to you last June in response to Chairman Kessel's remarks in Newsday, we are opposed to using property tax incentives to underwrite the operating cost of Amazon at the expense of the residents of the Syosset School District. What we've learned in the intervening months has done little to relieve our skepticism. Chairman Kessel has previously stated that Amazon means jobs, 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 and it's undeniable that there will be temporary construction jobs to build the warehouse. But the IDA is considering a 15-year tax abatement, hopefully in exchange for new permanent job creation. Amazon boxes aren't sitting around undelivered somewhere. So whatever package delivery jobs are needed are already being created even without the IDA's intervention. It's possible that IDA intervention might keep those jobs from being located outside Nassau County. But if that were likely, why does Amazon have a fleet of additional drivers for its Bethpage location operating out of a parking lot on Underhill Road in Syosset? New jobs are already being created and located in Nassau even without the IDA. Based on the standard valuation services assessment analysis of the property, over the 15-year life of the pilot, the applicant will have saved $8 million in taxes that would otherwise have been due on the improved property. That's money that could have lowered other residents' tax bills. Instead, it will be a subsidy of about $53,000 for each of the 150 jobs the applicant claims would be created. The savings to the applicant may even be greater, however. Based upon a review of the assessment and taxes made available by the county, it appears that the applicant just successfully challenged the taxes of the vacant property, lowering the tax bill by over 24% and shifting almost $160,000 per year to other taxpayers in Syosset. The terms reflected in the deviation notice appear to lock in any benefit from a surgiary lowering the lowering the baseline and locking in that tax shift as well. Although the pilot schedule does call for an annual inflation factor, it won't make up the loss in the tax challenge for at least five years just to get back to where it was in 2019, '20. In the meantime, other residents are asked to pick up the slack. If this were a struggling business, hoping to add to the local economy, that would be a more sympathetic story than subsidizing one of the world's most profitable companies. As we've previously written to the IDA, 15-year pilot agreements shield applicants from sharing in the future service costs of the communities they inhabit. School districts periodically borrow to renovate aging facilities. Any entity with a pilot arrangement gets to avoid chipping in their fair share, essentially passing the buck to the rest of the community. Should the IDA move ahead with this subsidy, applicants will sometimes seek to extend pilot agreements, either threatening to exit Nassau or making modest investments that purport to create new jobs. The IDA should make as a precondition of any pilot agreement that it will not extend benefits for jobs already created. And similarly, we believe that the IDA should prevent future exploitation of the arrangement by the applicant. A weak contract can allow the applicant to terminate the pilot agreement early, allowing them to forego the second half of the pilot payment and avoiding the full year's taxes altogether. The applicant also claims the need for financial assistance, asserting that their development of this property comes with associated costs for remedial actions, given the property's troubled environmental history. We wish that were true. But to our great disappointment, we can't identify any construction cost the applicant proposes to undertake that wouldn't be incurred even if this site was pristine soil. The applicant's preferred remedy is to construct a cap over the impacted soils, but that cap consists of nothing more than the very parking lots and warehouse that comprise the project and thus represents no additional cost. Moreover, we ask the applicant to consider some modest common sense remedial activities, additional air monitoring, soil testing adjacent to a cyanide hotspot, targeted soil removal where contaminants are concentrated, and all have been rejected by the applicant to date. In June, Chairman Kessel stated that we will be as creative as we can to lay out the welcome mat. The IDA appears anxious to make good on that promise with this plan to forgive Amazon substantial portion of its fair share of taxes, both now and in the future, as compensation for jobs that would inevitably be created anyway if they don't exist already at a cost of $53,000 per job. That's a pretty generous welcome mat. The IDA should be an engine of economic development, not corporate opportunism. And as we wrote in our letter to the IDA last June, it is the board's firm position that Amazon is not a struggling new business needing financial assistance in the form of a property tax abatement. If the last seven months of study have demonstrated anything, it is how weak the arguments are for further subsidizing this project through tax abatement. We ask the Nassau IDA to deny the applicant's request. Thank you for your time and attention. The district and board reserve the right to make additional comments before the IDA Board at its March 13th meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Frankel. Just to confirm, the next IDA Board meeting is March 15th.
Thank you for that correction.
Sorry.
Tracy, thank you. And also Laura Schultz, who I respect you. Great job there. It was good to hear you at least on this. I just, because you keep referencing my name, I just want to make a point. We are not giving Amazon a tax abatement, nor are we lowering the taxes. If we decide to go forward with this, the pilot schedule, and you're correct, Tracy, it's over a 15-year period. The numbers that that our staff has computed, they will be paying over the 15 years pilots, which are the same really as taxes. They're in lieu of taxes of $28.8 million. And if they were to pay the taxes currently, which as you correctly point out, were recently reduced, it would the revenue would be $16.4 million. So in fact, if we were the pilots, we were to do the 15-year pilots, it would be a tax benefit to the community of over $12 million over the 15 years. So we're not abating taxes or reducing them. We're actually increasing revenues to the residents of the county, the town, and the residents who pay school taxes in Syosset. And I think that it's a misnomer to think that, you know, we're we're doing something that's going to hurt other taxpayers. If we did this, and we haven't decided whether to do it or not, it will actually increase revenues and alleviate the tax pressure in that community. I think that's an important point to make. And I get frustrated at the IDA because many times people keep saying we're lowering taxes, and we're simply not doing that. The other thing I just want to point out, because you raised it, and it's a good point. I think you made a lot of good points. And that is that while there was a recent lowering of assessment as part of the negotiations, we would actually ignore the lower assessment and pilot payments at the former higher rate. So if we didn't go forward with this, then what would happen is that you would pay less taxes because of the the win by the applicants of a lower assessment. The IDA had worked out in negotiations with Amazon and Simon Properties that rather than start at that lower number, we start at the original higher number and then go up every year through that. The bottom line from a tax, and I'm just giving you numbers. I'm not saying, you know, we should or shouldn't do this. And I think you bring up excellent points. The bottom line for the taxpayers is, under an IDA package that's been negotiated with Amazon, the taxpayers would receive a net benefit of over $12 million over what they currently would pay if that property were vacant. Just wanted to make that point. But and by the way, I think your letters are, I don't read everything in them, but they're done. I actually have one of your letters at the top of my pile over here. And I just want to assure the school district that, you know, I understand there are always issues with school districts. But the bottom line is that the residents that pay their school taxes in your area are going to get a reasonable benefit, a higher amount of money than they would under normal circumstances. Thank you, Tracy, and thank you also, Laura, for love to hear from you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Catherine, at this time, do we have anyone else in the queue?
Yes, sir. We have Matthew Arisich.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. And quite frankly, I will echo Chairman Kessel's comments on that last speaker. Very clear, very concise, and very enlightening that people can put together, you know, a true explanation of what they're trying to achieve. However, I do have a difference of opinion. But quite frankly, I'm going to move forward and just explain where I am. So my name is Matthew Arisich, President of the Building and Construction Trades Council for Nassau and Suffolk Counties. I find that Amazon's plan for fulfillment and distribution center built on the former Sierra Wire site in Robbins Lane in Syosset is well-conceived. The project brings a specific local investment to the Town of Oyster Bay and stimulates economic development, all while creating opportunities for our skilled union tradesmen and tradeswomen on Long Island. I praise the efforts of Nassau County Executive Laura Curran and Town of Oyster Bay Supervisor Joe Saladino for working in tandem to make the most out of this long vacant property that will mutually benefit both the county and the town. Amazon's new single-level distribution facility spanning over 200,000 square feet will create hundreds of union construction jobs and later provide permanent employment for scores of Long Islanders who, as a result of the pandemic, are out of work. There were so many failed attempts to redevelop this project over the last three decades. Many plans included a residential component, but each of these plans faced tremendous opposition on every occasion. As President of the Council, it took an enormous amount of time and effort to put this together. We're nearly finished. And we just found out that there was a communication breakdown between a contractor and a construction manager, and we're extremely confident that we can secure the last contract for all the trades. It was an amazing feat for everyone to come together on this mission. And I want to thank everybody involved in making this project become a reality. Working men and working women want to provide for their families. And thanks to County Executive Curran, Town of Oyster Bay Saladino, and the IDA, we're moving forward with this important project. The successful relationship between the Building Trades Council and team at the Nassau County IDA proves that we can attract new business to Long Island and get things done the right way with union labor ensuring that families and working families fully share any economic opportunities that are here at home. Without development, we will undoubtedly experience further loss of jobs and opportunities for Nassau County residents. So that's why everyone should go ahead and spur all kinds of development, because we want to attract new business and create more opportunities to expand the tax base. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Arisich. Catherine, is there anyone else remaining?
Yes, we now have John Kush. John, can I tell you to state your name and address for the record, please?
Everybody, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is John Kush. I'm a business agent for Ironworkers Local 361, located at 8919 97th Avenue, Ozon Park, New York. And I'm speaking on behalf of the Ironworkers Union, representing Nassau County and the hundreds of members that live in Nassau County. Good evening, everybody. On the surface, this looks like a no-brainer. I mean, no new residents would be moving into the neighborhood, burdening school districts or the local infrastructure, and it would be adding more taxes to the local base along with new jobs. But I'm speaking today to ask Amazon to use the local building trades unions on the entirety of this project on these jobs. My members have been hurting since the pandemic started, and everybody still has to pay their own taxes and send their kids to school and do the day-to-day things that they need to do. And since the pandemic started, we've been hurting pretty good. Guys are losing their coverage. And it would be a shame if an out-of-town contractor came in here and, you know, we local people here in Nassau County watched a trillion-dollar company get tax breaks while they're flipping their fair share of taxes and don't get an opportunity to work on the project. So I appreciate the time to speak on this, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Kush, for joining us this afternoon. Catherine?
Sir, now we have Jack Mashcliff. Jack, are you with us?
Sorry, you may need to unmute your microphone.
Can you hear it?
Yes, now we can hear you. Please start.
Good afternoon, Ms. Jim. My name is Jack Mikeit. I'm a business representative for the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 25. The IBW represents several thousand working families here on Long Island. I'm here to speak in favor of the applicant's application. This former Sierra Wire has been a blighted site for many decades, and I think it's the board's responsibility to approve this application. The project will create hundreds of high-paying construction jobs as well as hundreds of full-time employees for Amazon. Coming off the the tail end of a pandemic, this project will generate much-needed tax revenue, creating secondary and tertiary spending to help stimulate the economy. The project's benefits to the community outweigh any concern or reservations that may have been raised. Once, you know, once again, Local 25 is in full support of this project. Thank you for your time and opportunity to speak.
Thank you for joining us this afternoon, sir. Catherine, is anyone next?
Yes, we have Sean McCaffrey.
Mr. McCaffrey?
Thank you all for the opportunity to speak to you. My family and I lived in Syosset for 35 years. My last two years of elementary school, when my school was closed, was spent at South Grove. So Robbins Lane, you have this blighted site poisoned. Then you have an unregulated town dump that closed the year before I went to the school. Then you have a school like in Brookhaven, many cancer cases that they built on the outskirts of the dump. That's absolutely brilliant. This may very well be our last chance to fix this. They capped, similar to what they want to do here, the town dump. People are still dying of various cancers. I have a list of almost 700 cases of cancer. My sister, next to me, all four daughters were afflicted by it. One survived. She's a year older than me, the same age as the former commissioner of the Nassau County Police Department, whose daughter died of cancer from that very same school. The same everywhere another girl that graduated the same year had cancer. The same graduating class of a fellow that had testicular cancer in ninth grade. The cancer is rampant. I spoke with an 800-person crowd at the Syosset High School. All kinds of politicians were there hearing me. Most of the people that have passed have been taken ill. Either sat in that same room or had family there. room or had family there. This must be fixed before it's covered. If it works, wonderful. It doesn't work because people are still dying, people that moved into the neighborhood around there after the dump was closed, decades after the dump was closed. Some houses have had two different owners afflicted by cancer there. There are many streams that run in the ground. Who knows where they're taking this to? You think that Bethpage is bad? This could be exponentially worse. The same company that brought you Love Canal, dumped there, Hooker. Robbins Lane was lined, as was Underhill Boulevard, with defense contractors during the nuclear age. The cure to that was bury it. There's the dump. What did Sierra do? Well, they destroyed swaths of land in their native Peru. They came here, and who knows how much sludge, I'm hearing figures of hundreds of thousands of gallons annually were put there. The ground glowed. People that rode their dirt bikes and everything back there speak of losing a boot, whatever, and it's coming up in a different color. The jobs, there are hundreds of cars parked on Underhill Boulevard. Is that even two miles away? Are those the same jobs? If so, that's not creation, that's relocation. The tax difference they're going to pay to 1.2 mil is barely 10%. The 28 mil they're going to pay is less than 2 million a year. The contractors and everything that are speaking, what are they going to do when the toxic dust starts kicking up and their people start dying? This is an abomination. Something has to be done. I'm not against Amazon. I'm against building on this land that is terribly poisoned. There's a massive carnage. I'm a retired member of the NYPD. If there was a bullet known to hurt 700 people, that bullet was not found, it would be front-page news, and there would be a lot of questions being asked. They're not, this is being swept over the rug, under the rug. This carnage is going to continue. It's not taken back. They should not get any sort of tax adjustment, whatever word you want to use, at all. Thank you.
Mr. McCaffrey, thank you for your time and your comments. Catherine, is there anyone else in the queue?
Yes, we have Kevin McKenna.
Mr. McKenna? Mr. McKenna, you may be muted.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, sir. Please proceed.
Okay, let me get right to the point. Legislative Drucker covered a whole lot of points, and he made an emphasis about how his main concern is for the community, yet he has failed to call out Supervisor Saladino, who promised independent testing on 150 Miller Boulevard, which runs contiguous with this site. How the IDA could be having this hearing tonight, prior, prior to the decision by the DEC, is unbelievable. Now, Chairman Kessel at the beginning of the meeting said that he made contradictory statements. He said that after the meeting tonight, the board will vote. Then he went ahead and he said that the residents that can't make this, this meeting now can speak on Thursday. Well, why would the residents want to speak on Thursday if you said you're going to vote tonight? But let me go on.
Mr. McKenna, I'm just going to pause you for one second, and we'll give you back the time. Just to be clear and to clarify Mr. Kessel's earlier comments, there is no vote today by the board, the final vote. I understand that. I'm clarifying if there was a misunderstanding or miscommunication. I am making you aware, and for our audience to be aware, that no vote is occurring today. It will not happen until the evening of Thursday night.
Very good. I find it very, I find it that it's very, first of all, let me, let me get this in right now so that you don't cut me off in my three minutes. I don't want to miss saying this. I want to go on the record right now and let Nassau County know that if this goes ahead, if the, if the IDA Board, and by the way, I appreciate everything that the IDA Board does, but I'm telling you right now that if this is voted positive, I will be with others. We will be filing an Article 78 proceeding against the Nassau County IDA because you are conflicted. You have a county executive, you have a county executive who took a $25,000 donation from Simon Properties, who is the applicant, and you have two board members, and they might be very fine gentlemen, but you have two board members on the IDA that should be recusing themselves because they are union representatives, and no matter what we say, no matter what anybody says, those two board members are going to vote yes because they want jobs for their union. So I respectfully request that the two, it might be three board members that are, that are connected to unions, that you, that you recuse yourself from this. And Chairman Kessel, you need to recuse yourself from this, and I'm going to tell you why. Because you, yesterday, on telephone calls, which were recorded, you have already told residents that you are approving this project. You told the resident yesterday that if you don't approve the project, that Amazon is going to pack up their toys and go home. Why don't you just tell us, Chairman Kessel, and with all due respect to you, you have already made up your mind, your whole tone tonight. You are advocating for this project, and you haven't even had a vote yet. And let me just go on to say also that I cannot believe that Legislative Drucker and that you, Mr. Kessel, that you have not made public the five-page letter that was sent to you by the Syosset School District. Legislative Drucker, the fact that you haven't made that public to your constituents is totally irresponsible. And I want to also say that Matt, the union representative, Matt, a few minutes ago, he just talked about how he appreciates the efforts of Laura Curran. Of course, you appreciate the efforts of Laura Curran. She got a $25,000 donation from, from Simon Properties, and you appreciate the efforts of Supervisor Saladino? Supervisor Saladino, on the record and in the local newspapers, two months ago, he told the Syosset residents that finally the property is going to be cleaned up. How can Supervisor Saladino make a statement that the property is going to be cleaned up when the DEC still has not made a decision on the type of remedy? How could he make that statement? He lied. He lied to the public.
Mr. McKenna, I appreciate your comments. I'm going to ask you to wrap it up. I did give you back some time.
I'm going to wrap it up, and I appreciate it. I appreciate it. Mr. Kessel, you talked a little while ago, earlier, about a democracy, and you have this meeting on a, on a, on an afternoon on a Tuesday. Why is that? To make it convenient for the unions that you're in bed with and not, and not allow the public to participate, and you can't have this meeting in an evening? It's disgusting. And I'm telling you right now, I will serve you with an Article 78 costing the Nassau taxpayers money, and I will, I will make public, I will make public the donation that Laura Curran has gotten from this applicant, and Laura Curran put you, Mr. Kessel, in your position, and you are doing what she wants to be done, and you've already made a decision. So why don't you just tell us all that right now?
All right, Mr. McKenna, I appreciate your time. Thank you for your comments. Catherine, at this point, is there anyone else remaining?
Harry, hold on one second. Kevin, first of all, thank you for your kind words to everyone. And, you know, I've tried to work with you, but I have to, I have to say a couple of things about, you know, your criticisms personally of some people that I've worked with and that I've known for years. And the misinformation is just, I just can't let it go. First of all, Laura Curran is one of the finest public servants I know. She receives campaign contributions. I note that you're running for office this year as Oyster Bay Supervisor, and people that run for office get contributions. That in no way has any impact either on Laura Curran or on the IDA. We are, make our judgments based on the facts and where we think things should lie. And, and I have to say, I worked for six governors in my life, a lot of them from U. Carey to Andrew Cuomo. And I'm privileged to work with County Executive Laura Curran. I think she's doing a terrific job. And, and the notion that somehow a campaign contribution would impact her decision-making or ours is absurd. The other thing I have to say is, we do have two union people on our board. One of them is Anthony Simon, who represents the Long Island Railroad Workers Union. Not sure quite what that has to do with this project, absolutely nothing. The other, Chris Fusco, used to head the carpenters' union. These two people have independent judgment and advocates, and I would say that for everyone on the IDA Board. The board volunteers, it's time. We don't get paid, and we do things case by case, and we do it with integrity and honesty. And as far as myself, I did speak to a couple of constituents. By the way, one who called me yesterday, he said, why aren't we doing this in the morning? Everyone has their own opinion. But I will tell you that I never said that I was going to vote for it. What I said was that if we didn't approve it, it's likely that Amazon would not locate there, and we would lose hundreds of jobs. And that is the truth. Whether that is a deciding factor or not, we'll see. But I would just give you a suggestion. I like you. You're, you know, we've communicated by email, and I respect you and a lot of the things that you've done in civic advocacy. But I think that when you talk about people, you shouldn't personalize it so much. That's just not right, and it's not becoming a view or anyone else who does.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Catherine, at this time, I'm going to ask if there are any other additional attendees who have not spoken yet?
No, sir, not at this time.
Thank you very much. Seeing none, on behalf of the agency, I would like to thank everyone for attending this public hearing and for their comments with respect to the project and the financial assistance. It is now 4:01 PM, and I call this hearing to a close. Thank you all for joining us this afternoon.